Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? By Jerry Hahn. All approve, say aye.
Aye.
Disapprove? Motion will carry. Next would be police vehicle bids. This is, we're in need of technically three vehicles, two in this year's budget, and one will be the vehicle to replace the one that EMS transferred over to the sheriff's. You can give a copy of that?
No.
Sorry, bud.
Looking for it.
And you didn't have it.
Well, I'll look at that one.
That's from Greta. Well, I'm gonna pass it. I'm gonna get it cut. Somebody make copies of it.
I did.
Will you make copy of that one?
I'll do it.
Okay. Well, going into appointment of board of adjustments. We'll come back to that.
Pretty special ride.
Yeah. I'm sorry. The car. Performance of the board of adjustments, this is in District Four. Mike Ballard has agreed to serve. Mike with Area One Realty has agreed to serve, and he's already been told he has excused himself if he's in a conflict of interest, and Mike's agreed to do that. So entertaining motion to approve Mike's appointment.
I'll make a motion.
Motion been made by Jeff Lear, second by Jerry Hahn. All approve, say aye.
Aye.
Disapprove? Motion will carry. Now, did you get the fuel motors all bids?
Yes.
I know you got some of it by email, some of them are hard copies. Again, DNR oil was five cents above rack price, same thing that bid that was on the late bid, and then the various numbers for the motor oils and so forth that we do use. We do veer off from that occasionally. Well, you got a certain vehicle that uses a certain oil down the road part. I think you still get some, Jim, from Newcom, or was it the old Newcom company occasionally?
Reddell.
It doesn't have that.
Need a motion to approve DNR Oil Company for the fuel and the oils and lubricants.
Motion to effect.
Thank you, Sam. Sir, second, by Jerry Hahn. All approve, say aye.
Aye.
Disapprove? Motion carries. And just point of note, I do, we do appreciate DNR service. They've always been very serviceable, and don't you think guys think they've always been?
Yeah, actually, I think two of our tanks are technically theirs, and all on the oil, like the bulk oil stuff, the pumps that go on it actually pump out some vapor by the minute as part of their service. If we ever all stand on them, they need to take that stuff with them. We just have to negotiate with them.
Good job. Next would be health and dental insurance renewal. Health insurance renewal initially started out at 14.2% increase, and we were able to negotiate down to 9.6% increase.
Six or seven.
9.6.
Okay.
That is a little small print, isn't it? And then, that's with the same company we're currently with, Bluegrass Family Health, and I would recommend the court to approve that and allow the court to absorb that total cost.
I'll make a motion to effect.
Thank you, Burns. Sir, second?
I'll say.
Second by Sam Hutchins. All approve, say aye.
Aye.
Disapprove? Motion carries. Next would be your dental insurance.
That'll make a big difference. Pay raise.
On the dental insurance, we have Guardian now, current plan. Did you get that in your mailbox?
Yes.
I will.
Yeah.
It's a picture of people in the picture.
See, I think the holiday threw me and not putting all this stuff in. Usually I do that on Friday morning, and we were all on Friday. Sorry, bud. Did you mail? But basically, guys, it's an increase, and it shows here the monthly increases. You see the employee, there's 51 employees, the current rate is 1694, the monthly rate is 1914 on the increase, and so it's about $2.40.
And this is optional for the employees, correct?
Optional for the employees, but we do split the cost of it.
The 51 employees are currently on?
51, and 22, 9, and 19. 101 employees are enrolled.
Do you have per helps on those things?
It's in your box. Should be.
The help thing too?
Uh-huh.
You got, I'll get it afterwards. My guy.
I think I put it in everybody's box.
I bet.
I got yours in loving. Have you checked since about 8:30?
Correct.
I thought I put it in there.
He checked.
I agree. Motion to approve the renewal with Guardian.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Sir, second?
Second.
Second by Sam Hutchins. All approve, say aye.
Aye.
Disapprove? Motion carries. You know, we just added, just so you know, we just added dental a few years ago, and obviously with 101 employees on it, it is one of the good benefits they did.
Pretty good.
Next would be EMS report.
Should have your monthly and annual year-end report in your box. End of the year with 6,604 calls made, averaging below over 18 calls per day. That's about 300 calls from last year, and we have that trend. Each year we're about 300, averaging about 300 or more calls. That's based on population or volunteer, wherever you want to put it to, but we still are doing that. If you look at 2010, 5,784 calls, we bought a bottom row at three and a half trucks, four trucks in a day, three trucks at night, and as those runs go up, you know, the demand for service, our guys don't have much downtime, and it's pretty much back to back call.
Especially the eight o'clock till?
Eight till nine, eight to eight, eight to nine, but especially if the transfer, what Judge referred to, from about 7:30 to 4:00, we, you know, the bulk of our calls are back and forth, well, without transfers from the hospital.
It's a constant flow.
We average three hours per transfer, and that's really where we have a drain on resources.
And don't, probably about January, need to look at what the other communities are charging for those in.
Right.
You know, we raised them last year, but we probably need to evaluate that whole picture.
Yep.
Especially on the convalescent type, or the ramps like that. Thank you.
You want to talk about the bid opening?
Yes, please.
Okay. We advertised, as you remember, advertised for a oil drive ambulance that would be more or less a demo, had to be built before work, about first of this year. That in itself presented some difficulties, but we did advertise it, we put it out to several companies, and we also looked at used, Joe Watts wanted to look at used as well, and we got some quotes in on used. The cheapest quote we got was 2012 with 15,000 miles with a remounted box. We don't know what kind of box it was, a top west, and that came in at 120,000. So our bids came in, first one's from Arrow Emergency Vehicles out of Iowa, have no dealings with these folks, and they bid a remount even though he said new move. Their remount come in at 159.9. Pen Care Public Safety is a Braun, which is a company that builds boxes, Braun ambulance manufacturer. They bid a 2015 Ford F-350 Demonstrator for 138,207, and my recommendation would be the Demonstrator at 138,207.
What do you mean by Demonstrator?
It's one they built that they took around to show people it's got 700 miles on it, but it is a 2015 built before July.
Got all the warranty with it?
Yeah, they submit the whole manual about the truck and all of the engine and all the specs.
Got that 6.7 motor?
6.7. F-350.
Have you seen the truck or just pictures of it?
No, I haven't seen it.
Different order, it's new. You don't see it till it comes in. Recommendation is to purchase that vehicle.
I'll make a motion.
To approve the board?
The Pen Care Public Safety.
Thank you, Sam.
The vehicle.
Second by Jerry Hahn. Any further discussion? There's a lot of silence on the court right now.
We got a hand.
All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Thank you.
Yeah, it was 24 inches of snow in the ground. I wondered how he got around. I didn't want to ask him.
He had one, he had one forward drive.
Yeah, this will replace the one that we have that is a 2003 with a 1986 box.
But we're gonna keep that.
We're gonna hold it back.
It'll be the first truck out. Oh, 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 that thing just gets broken in.
How many miles on it? Is that more, 260?
It's on your 537.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
It's 537.
Where diesel is, that's what they tell me.
536.
Seven.
270, running out 224,000.
Yeah, and it's 600. We could put another 4,000, 5,000 in it.
He's got a 600. That's a good one.
It's still running after 2000.
That's the third one.
Third one.
It was rebuilt under warranty and then rebuilt twice on our memory.
Jail report.
He's one.
He is, yeah. Don't. George is not here today, but you have passed out what your report would be, basically your, you have 111?
Yes, sir.
In house.
And 31 of those are state inmates, and two are weekenders, and 78 of them are county inmates.
No escapees?
Nope.
That's amazing. That's amazing.
No power tools and the frozen leaf?
Nothing we found, anyway.
We have to fill solid waste report.
Well, if you guys were flat during Joe's, you're gonna be real flat. Okay, you guys know on our one roll off truck, it's our newer of the bunch, and when I say new, it's a 2007, it's got 165,000. That motor is done. The rod went through the block, so we gotta do something different. I sent you guys an email on that. We've been discussing it for a while. We've got a couple options. Those engines are hard to find because they only made them for 2007 through 2009. I can buy one through, when I say buy one, that's a remanned motor through the place we actually bought the truck from, Kentucky Truck Sales. I think I sent you guys an email on that.
I did.
30, what did he, 29, 235?
635.
Yep, 29, 635. Kentucky Truck Sales will have it ready in three weeks.
Installed.
Installed. They're installed. I'm not touching them. So that's one option. We're currently renting a truck to keep up with our demand right now.
What kind of warranties on that truck?
One year.
We give it a one-year warranty on that motor, is what we get on that purchase.
So you only got 167,000 miles on a brand-new motor?
Yep.
And now this is a remanned motor, so we're probably not gonna get that out yet.
I'll give you the options as everybody watches me bring it to you. The next option is we can buy a used motor that's out there. It's 10 grand for a used one. You get 180-day warranty on it. The lowest mileage I can find is like 700, 800,000 miles on it. They're older road trucks. We have to pull ours out, install that one, or rebuild it before we install it.
That one might be a little bit used.
Is that the same one?
Same engine.
Same engine, and they got 700,000 miles out there, and we only got 164,000. But we start to start off.
You triple the miles on that one, so I'd put in about 400 roughly, run miles.
Third option's a company called Fleet Pry, which is Republic. They've switched their names over the years. They claim they can get us a cat motor, do a swap-out. I've not yet to gotten any writing yet from them, but it will work for roughly 30,000. But it's all worth it. I've got nothing.
We're not sure that the parts, you know, the?
The brains will marry each other.
Might have to change everything, yeah.
But now, I tell you, a cat engine's great.
Yeah, I talked to the mechanic about that.
But there's issues with switching a motor over that original camp Mercedes now, but the cat engine in it. They claim they can do them, but till I get it in writing, I get a warranty, I'm just a little weary of it.
Okay, Brad, the item number one, which I'm recommending to the court, is the motor at 29,635. With that motor in, the value of that truck will be what?
Probably 100,000. Probably 100,000. We looked them up online for that age, that mileage, that's 90 to 100, depending on, you know.
Is that Sterling?
That's a Sterling. That's the newest truck we have. Our second truck we have.
Which is eight years old.
Our second truck we have, which is 10 years old, has 500,000 miles on it. That has a cat engine in it. Now, it's gotten down where it's burning a gallon of oil a day. Sam and I have kind of talked about that scheme thing, so that's not bad.
He laughs, but I'm laughing.
It's been a good one, but I can tell you, we're probably on our last thread with that. That engine needs to be rebuilt, but we don't have time to stop and rebuild it. We turned, and I checked with Rhonda this morning, we had 160, what's called turns, which means I deliver it to somebody's house or a factory, and then come back and get it. We did that 160 times in the month of June. But for one particular client, I won't say exactly who it is, they spent 14,000 to 15,000 dollars with us a month. So what I'm getting at, guys, is something's going on with the economy right now. With the past two or three months, it's been?
Hard to keep up?
Yeah, it's been as busy as we were back when the housing boom was going on. So there's been a lot of stuff going on. Construction wise, I don't know if it'll keep up, I don't know. But we keep two trucks busy. When we were down with this one truck, I mean, we were running 9, 9:30 at night.
Well, that truck without a motor, though, it worked nothing.
Oh, no, you gotta fix that one. So that's my first night of business with you guys.
You need to. I think we need to do the new motor rebuild. Have them do it and put it on the road. Get it back to us.
Motion in order?
We're doing, what, six grand a month right now? We're in the paper.
We'll see, 70.
7.
72, 73.
Let's put another motor in.
Motion in order?
I'll make a motion that we purchase the remanned motor with a one-year warranty.
From Kentucky Truck Sales.
Kentucky Truck Sales.
Okay.
Installed. Correct.
Motion, is there a second to the motion?
I'm second.
Second, I got two seconds. Jeff was right there first. All approve, say aye.
Aye.
Disapprove? Motion will carry.
Second line of business. Right, in the same talk with that, I mean, you guys just heard what I talked about. Dean and I had discussed this right before the budget came out, and we decided we was gonna push it to next year as far as asking for a roll-off truck, but you guys need to consider that. I mean, even if I bid one out, it will take six to eight months to get one. That's how far, they just don't build these trucks anymore, unless you find one that's on a lot. Now, we're renting a truck from Cleveland, Ohio, the one you guys were talking about. That truck's 190,000, so it's just got more stuff on it than we need. That's the reason it's so expensive. I don't know if they would come down on that cost.
But they bid it.
They may, I don't know.
Is there any way they might deduct the rent?
The rent, that's per their rental agreement, 125% of what we pay in, can go towards the purchase price. Now, they don't, we had to insure that truck for 190,000. Whether that's the purchase price, I don't know. It becomes negotiated.
Through private law.
Through procurement laws, we have to.
Just in case it burn up, or you picked up a hot load, or who knows what.
So through procurement laws, we gotta bid it out.
We don't have to.
Now, what I'm asking today is, I don't know, we need two good trucks at all times. I don't have a third backup truck, I really don't. I mean, we ran.
That's before the engine. When we were working on the budget, the engine was right there.
Right. And I should not have brought it up, guys. I don't want to ask unless it's needed. We got.
And the landfill will pay with us. We can bid up solid waste.
We don't, you don't have to approve it. We can bid it. Bids will be 45 days out, probably, kind of like together, and come to you guys, but you really need to think, I mean, this is a business that?
Once you go and get a bid on it.
Well, I'll bring it to you guys, but at that point, I gotta be serious about buying some.
And advertise.
I know, you just want to do the process.
I think we're not gonna seriously consider it, because it is a lot of work. Yeah, I think, and I think the need is there.
Motion in order to advertise for bids for a roll-off truck. Sam?
I'm gonna get one.
My key?
I'll say.
Second by Sam Hutchins. All approve, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I forgot to discuss it. Yes.
The new roll-off truck, I think it's gonna come out of landfill, but correct.
Yes, I thought I mentioned that, but I don't know.
Brad, you need a motor.
Disapprove? Motion carries.
Brad, we have one boxes out there.
Hey, the first time one of those.
We have 20 boxes out there, that's out there, one box, one truck, can't serve them all, so you've gotta have two good trucks running, and a backup, because there's gonna be maintenance, breakdowns.
Dragging with your pickup truck.
Third story I'm gonna tell.
Oh, no. Two, two's it.
I shouldn't have skipped last court meeting. You guys have probably seen in the bills, we're gonna switch over to the solid waste now. You've probably seen in the bills, we have probably kept Mike's trucking business going for the past month. We've had a lot of problems with garbage trucks. I don't know what was going on, had some brake issues, some camp stuff, some shrouds go out, which then ended up causing damage to some radiators. We actually have in the budget to bid a garbage truck. That was already approved, you guys put it in there. I've been hesitant about moving forward, just for the sole reason of annexation issues, and just being cautious moving forward, but I saw after this past week or two, I think we're probably wise to go and bid one out, see where those bids come in as well, and then get rid of some of our older stuff. I got a truck that we're starting to piece out, and we're getting to the point, my mechanic says we can't keep piecing it. We've gotta put the stuff back on it to have it as a spare. I mean, right now, we just can't run it. It's a 19, when did you buy those trucks?
98.
98.
Yeah, 98, so we're going on 17-year old garbage trucks.
Last year Ford made them.
Yeah. One of them was kind of parked, because it's gotten to the point where blows hoses and cylinders so much that we can't keep it up and going.
Back progression or something.
It's just, to be honest, we can keep them old cylinders where out, just the seals on them, three of them is 14, 15 hundred dollars, but that's harder to take on an old truck that's 17, 18 years old. Now, our truck is 406. We run it, we run it last week a lot, and it's.
How many cylinders?
Eight.
It's 406, one. 406 is one-year original.
12 grand.
It's got a lot of miles on it.
That's 12,000 dollars.
Oh, my gosh. Many miles, and we've rebuilt those, what they call the skins on them, the garbage truck, the package sub skin, which would be your floor and your sweep blade part. It just gets so much wear and tear, and we've probably rebuilt them three or four times and rides out. The same thing, I'll bring the bids back to you guys, and that one was interesting. It's just, I was kind of waiting to bid that one as well, and again, those trucks is six months out to get one.
If we wait six months, it's only 10,000 higher, too.
Probably, and this one, we're gonna consider, or I'll bid it out as an option, so many people are using these, what they call toter cans anymore, which are 80, 90-gallon cans. They sell them at low.
With the kicker on it?
We're gonna get a kicker, there's a little thing on the back that you roll it up to, he grabs it and picks it up for you. I think we gotta start considering that for gas, to be honest with you. I mean, we're having a lot of issues with big cans, and we ask everybody to bag it, but reality of that happens.
Most everybody's buying, it's always just a few.
Yeah, and so, once we do that, I think over time, through attrition, we'll eventually put them on all the trucks, but it'll be an extra team to put one on the truck, just for the plumbing.
It'll be a bid option.
I mean, a lot of people are going.
Little table, hips, pick it up.
No, it's actually an arm.
Well, no, no, no. On the back, yeah, on the back, it's just a little platform that comes down. It'll have a hook that hooks onto the can. You ever hook those cans, get that bar on it?
Right.
And it'll flip it up like that.
They still have to roll the truck to the back end, because these rural areas are everywhere, you know, these.
They've actually got them on the ground.
Don't confuse it for what they call sidearm bands, one-arm bands, the ones that you're riding down a road, and you see the big arm come out and grab it, pick it up, starting to be.
They work good in subdivisions, but they don't work good on county roads. That's the difference. If you had.
Those trucks are, they're probably close to 300,000. But you get rid of what your only room one guy loves, because he's just playing with controls all day long instead of physically doing it.
They don't break down, too, though.
Well.
More mechanical than.
What our trucks do is, when we're in a new open, new haven area, I mean, we're hitting residential houses, and then we'll swing through and get a commercial business, convenience store, whatever, so you gotta have a truck that can do both. A lot of times, those trucks can only do residential. It's not practical in a rural community to have one truck going out doing dumpsters, which are on our way to new.
As time went on, though, you could manage your routes.
You could.
Where you could have subdivisions with one or two trucks, and that's down the road.
They would work well in the city, to be honest with you. That's something I think they're considering.
They're considering.
Yeah, but what it helps you do, you get down.
So Brad, anyone advertise for garbage truck?
Yes.
It's already in the book.
It's already in the book. That one I planned for.
Thank you, Jeff. Second, taken by Bernard Ice. All approve, say aye.
Aye.
Disapprove? Motion will carry.
Only one last thing real quick, as you guys probably saw on the paper, we are reapplying for a five-year permit. You gotta do that every so often for our landfill itself. They ran an ad, all that is, every five years, you gotta re-up your permit. So if you guys see that in the paper, it's nothing, it's a typical, you know, what we typically do out there, so.
Brad, while we're on the landfill solid waste, in the last court meeting, we approved an increase for employee Eddie Powell. We wanted, and I meant we should have included, the other employee that runs the landfill when you're not there, Robert Brown, for additional increase as well to match Eddie's increase, and that would take him to 2470 an hour. I think a motion to approve that. Motion by Bernard Ice, is there a second?
I'll say.
Second by Sam Hudgens, any further discussion? All approve, say aye. Disapprove, motion carries. Eddie and, Eddie Powell and Robert have always been on the same level, and they both are key ingredients to the success of the landfill.
They're key for me being able to do other stuff.
Like fire department stuff and so forth. Yeah, I knew I'd get him grinning back there.
Yeah, cause it wasn't for that, I didn't use...
Road Department report, yeah?
All right. Equipment I need is shuttles and ramps.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say. Half a dozen of leaves.
That's all I got.
Yeah.
Now, ours don't get more out, we get stolen. Well, we know that.
That would be huge.
All right, bushhogs, they're running constantly. We're in District Two, that's the second round. We completed District Five, Jerry's for the second round. But we'll be pulling off and doing some fairground bushhogging here this week, cause spares, you're pretty close, isn't it?
July, mid-July.
Next week.
Yeah, next week.
Boommore runs when we have personnel, and it's in District Five at this point in time, but it's not running today. Great Old Crew's doing, did a lot of tree cleaning up and tree cutting down. Some of Wycliffe and Clark Town Road area, Chester Hawn cul-de-sac, we had cleared a lot of trees out for that, Jerry. That project's turning out nice looking. We're getting finished with it. The only thing we'll have to do is pay that cul-de-sac when I get a deed for the property, and that's our surveying company, Benson and those guys. Greater Crew's, of course, they worked on Chester Hawn, just made with that, and you had a drop box problem, just routine maintenance stuff, guys. We did fix the Permian Clark lane over there with hot mix, and I've got the P.O. ready to go on the overlay, but that's about it, and that's all I have, so...
Okay.
No big money.
That's good, good. Would you like to get the police deal?
Okay.
Eddie might have something to add.
Correct. Police vehicle bids, Rhonda passed out, made digital copies for everyone, twenty-eight thousand, one fifty-seven oh eight. You know, that's a Ford Explorer, four-by-four package. Got the, we can actually deduct, I believe you said we can deduct two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from that bid, because we're gonna take out one of the options that we requested.
Two seventy-five.
Two seven, that's what I said.
Two thousand. I was gonna make the motion.
He worked fast now.
We'll get five or six more of them.
Two hundred and seventy-five dollars out for that price, because of an option, he's not gonna give us a backup. Beepers, whatever they call it, cameras.
Yeah, rear sensors. And I actually found out, Jeff, I didn't talk to you, like, good day late afternoon, that these vehicles are standard with rear cam, rear vision.
Okay, so we're gonna need it.
Boy, didn't you say that.
Actually, we need two for the sheriff's office. The sheriff has an option to buy those as well without his budget, if he's got any money left. And then we're gonna need another third one for Joe to replace the one that he transferred to the sheriff's office. You understand what we're saying? And wait for the insurance settlement on those other two vehicles. You ever got anything, Rhonda, have you? The Parkway Drive, you said? Yeah, that's a good word for it.
And that'd be in addition to what, about four thousand pieces, the time we put in computers and...
Five minimum. Maybe seven.
Five for the computer.
You're ultimately quiet back there.
Just bear in mind, when we went to the SUV, we made a commitment.
Yes.
That you're spending about five thousand, four thousand dollars more per unit, but we think the long-term benefit will benefit everybody. If we keep them on the highways. Eddie, if we keep them on the highways.
You didn't buy that, your cars, you have the cornfield, you're... Could we push an oak mile or one?
I was taking a roll-off. I'll take it.
Motion to approve the...
More than...
How many were approved in the turk?
Three.
Joe gave his, your vehicle to the police because...
We had not equipped it as of yet, and after the Parkway Drive, we said the sheriff's office was short about three vehicles. So we...
You reported that to us one time before.
You wanna do it, I'll do it.
Motion, take it, Sam.
Three vehicles.
Motion to approve by Sam Hudgens, her second.
I'll say second.
I saw Jeff first, so Jeff, all approve, say aye. Disapprove, motion carries.
Jeff, wanna comment on that, I made, and the purpose of the ambulance or the good salesman brought up something to me that Ron and I hadn't thought about, but the county can be their own fleet manager because of the number of Ford vehicle crewed by, and he wanted to know if we had our F.I.N. number before we... And Ron and I didn't know about that.
We did.
But, as it turns out, we do. So on the ambulance purchase, actually, we'll get a thirty-two hundred dollar rebate. I'll board on that, by turning on our fleet number.
Next, just wanna report to you guys, I have one quote right now, I'm gonna try to get one more quote for you guys on the Sutherland Building. I just gave you that for informational purposes at this point. Trying to get another quote, somebody that can strip all that paint off and then repaint it. I thought the quote this fellow gave us was reasonable.
Where does quote come from? I mean, who was this guy?
This, Charles hired.
He recommended.
He recommended this company. They've used, he's done work around here, he knows this guy is out of them. And he knows, he's done several jobs for them. He knew, he knew where such-and-such was, and Louisville Road... We don't wanna say right now, don't wanna say right now. Yeah, I'm gonna get one more quote. I just wanna report to court, cause they asked me to, the guy's a ballpark figure. But I'm gonna get one more quote.
And the roof, the roof is solid, but it just needs skin coverage.
I'll try to have you have that by the next quarter. Technically, an advertisement's not required, because it's gonna be below the twenty thousand dollar threshold. And so technically, by administrative code and policy, that two quotes is all. I couldn't say this is especially odd, but I'm gonna give the locals a little chance to give me a closer look. Next order of business would be the old Pick 'n Pay building. Talked to the fire department, what guys, wanna meet with y'all this week? Or Monday, Monday? Monday, Monday. We've redirected ourselves back to the old Pick 'n Pay building, after we looked at the other strip mall, and they're fine with that. So what I'd like to do is ask the court to advertise, to put a new roof on that Pick 'n Pay building, and then take and advertise to put some doors and tear it off the canopy on the front. Those two items, right, guys?
Why you wanna tear the canopy off?
Where we can pull the vehicle, put the doors in, and two doors on the front. And make it decorative, it'll be a decorative type of look.
When you take the canopy off, you're not gonna come back around and wrap that front, you know what I'm saying?
Right, right.
I'm thinking just taking the thing.
No.
And it's a leak in.
That way they get the four doors.
The canopy is shot, fellas.
I remember you telling that question.
I can only do two things at a time.
I mean, you spend a lot of money fixing that canopy, and then it's in the way.
It's in the way of time, it's all of them.
And also, aesthetics, and it's not structural.
Do you think, Sam, we all tried to do something on the heating there? You guys decided, you go ahead.
Well, Ron, we're gonna have to do something.
You decide on the...
Got two great...
Were the trucks gonna be burning, is that gonna be climate controlled as well?
It'd be heated in the winter, it won't be cool in the summer.
Heat in the winter. Well, can you hang those type of heaters on there that, you know, we have to run the furnace stuff?
Can we take the furnace off the jail, put it down there?
What's the height for the trucks?
Paydays don't come in the summer.
The current trucks right now, they still don't, they're less than roughly ten and a half feet.
You got, you got twelve feet to get in there. With the trusses in there, my numbers that...
Twelve feet tall? That's about all they got now, I mean, there ain't much room, what you got?
Twelve foot gets me to what?
The door. The two doors that's in the back, they'll be right down to twelve feet.
Yeah, that's, but that was as big as you could get in that.
And that's funny.
And that's why I'm making sure, yeah, he's gonna, you know, cause you got those trusses in there. I done some measuring back when Joe was pushing, and I went and pulled my old files out.
Joe's a good worker.
Still age for a lot of stuff.
It's twelve, twelve feet can come back so far, and then it drops down. Only reason why we know that, we've got a communication trailer with that tower on top of it, it'll only fit in the back door so far back, and then those, those trusses drop a little bit.
But if you got something taller than twelve feet, it, you know, I don't know what, our trucks, they got anything bigger than twelve, it won't go in there.
Thirty-six is the max, right?
The only thing that we'd have either there would be some type of aerial ladder device that we presently don't own, but there's not enough room in that building to put it in there anymore.
Do they lean to on one side or the other?
Ten or something.
We'll do something that's appropriate to the setting in the area as time progresses. It would be nice, I could have leaned to, it's not very, this is not a farmland.
Well, you can do a decorative lean to.
Taking a motion to advertise for a new roof and the doors, tearing off the canopy. Second by Jeff Lear, motion was made by Bernard Ice.
Motion to...
Advertise, put a roof replacement and the, tearing off the canopy, and two new doors on the front.
And no way to be...
Well, we're working on that together, see what exactly we made...
It's got two units, got two over the front roof.
I don't see like very good this stuff, it must spend some time. All approve, say aye. Disapprove, motion carries. It'll mind a little suffering and a little heat.
Dude, winter's gonna be real. I got one question.
Okay.
That is, we're spending a whole lot of money. Paydays coming.
We haven't spent any money yet.
But we're getting ready to.
Only if...
We got to slow, we need to slow up our, our...
Jerry, everything that's, everything that you approved to date, with the exception of the roll-off truck, is a budgeted item. Now, this is not, and we're working on that. Now, did you vote yes or no?
No, I'll vote yeah, y'all. Get overruled anyhow, but I'm just saying, we're spending a lot of money. It's for good reason.
That's the last bill.
But it's gotta be a payday, so...
That's the last bill, like you said, that's the last bill that we have another thing to...
And if we wanna, we gotta put it in...
And regardless, if we keep the building, we got roof, regardless.
It is a value to the public to have that building for a purpose, even the fire department later on decides...
Oh, they gotta have something.
If you decide to live to a bigger location, as time goes on, this building will still have a value to the system. And that's why I kinda look at it.
Insulated doors.
Yes. Even the glass ones are now, I saw this.
Yeah, metal on both sides, too. You can get them.
What did Brad, y'all take care of all of them?
Insulated door metal on both sides.
Just get it fixed.
I don't know, I think it was supposed to be.
Okay. Thank you, fellas. The other thing, there was a resolution under Old New Business that last court meeting I presented to you guys for EMS, O.M. security grant, I failed to get a vote on it. You guys saw it last week. You'll remember it's in the minutes, the last page of the minutes. I'm gonna pass it around to each or by, for each or by member. I failed to get a vote on that. Joe, that's for your actual...
Well, that was for five.
I know, but which project is it?
The two more of the power pipes for EMS.
Remember the big cods? Right, right.
Two weather sirens to replace aged weather sirens. And if we get it done, I'm not sure we're gonna get it done, but this has been the right, where it comes as more radio. There's one drawbacks to getting radio for the...
How much trouble the car... I make a motion for him to, that we got on the... Got a motion from Magistrate Gary Hunt to approve the resolution as presented, second by Jeff. All approve, say aye. Disapprove, motion carries, we got a dead time. My bad. Let's see if there's anything else about the gentleman here. That's all I have in court today.
Dean, one thing I've got to mention, you guys asked about micro-surfacing last time, and I did a little research.
Yeah.
I got a research packet here for you guys to take home and read and study.
I wasn't too impressed when I went out and looked at it, Jim, the final product. You guys know what we're talking about from two forty-five to Nazareth?
It's like maybe just painted.
Well, they sealed, they sealed it, that was the best thing they did.
It's a company that did it is out of Ohio. Strawser Construction Incorporated. They put a three-eighths inch coat mix, they call it, it's a most fat asphalt, it's a fancy, fancy chipsy, basically. It's got semen in it, it's got polymers, and it's sand, and it puts about a three-inch coating over everything. I mean, a three-eighths of an inch, I'm sorry, quarter to three-eighths of an inch.
It's got three eighths on it?
Yeah.
It'd look like if it had an eighth, it was like...
Well, you know, it's new to the state, I talked to Jufi and Andrew and Chad, and it's something they're trying to experiment with. There was a lot of cracking in that road, and how long that holds up before the water gets in there and starts, pavement starts failing and getting worse, maybe one, two years, so they put this on there. You see this price per square yard is about forty-five percent the cost of an inch and a quarter overlay. Now, Mago actually bid a maintenance mix against these guys. It's a five-eighths inch thick asphalt hot mix, all right? And they weren't low bid, so they awarded it to this outfit out of Ohio. And that, to me, is a problem, getting them to come in and do it.
Did Mago actually bid a five-eighths of an inch overlay?
Yeah.
I didn't know the machine went that way.
Well, they, it's a special, it's a special... It's a special mix, and it is cheaper. Here's the bids, the one that was, they did five fifty-five out there, the new highway, and Mago was, they weren't low bid, but anyway, these are the bids, it was asphalt, it was a five-eighths inch thick mix. We can try some, it's a special mix, it's hot mix. We get a road that needs a skin cover over it.
That's solid on the, on the structure, but it's got cracks in it.
But their price on that asphalt was seventy-something dollars a ton.
You could practice on one in my district.
It come out of asphalt money, it's not free.
I said practice, I didn't say...
We can practice.
Jim, do they have any examples of where they use it by any...
Mago? No, I think they threw that out there for, to be competitive. There's not too much of this micro-surfacing going on in Kentucky at all. They do a lot in Ohio and North Dakota, but the hot mix people aren't thrilled with this thing at all.
Well, who chose them to do it?
The state, who at the state, I don't know.
I was at Frankfurt with transportation camp last week, and with the rural secondary program, and they were not real familiar with this at all. So it is very experimental.
It's experimental in Kentucky, but it's been around forever, it's not for, but it's just, and it's just another tool to, you know, some of these roads get fifteen years old, and they're not breaking up or anything, there's pitting real bad, and they need something done to them, and this is what you can do to those type of roads.
Winter, winter's gonna tell the tale, this one out here.
Again, the best thing is with seal, with seal cracks.
And I took out, this price per square yard, I took out the striping and all that in these bids, is how I came up with that. Try to equate it to something we could use, if we were gonna pay, and put it a price per linear foot, and you kinda see what an inch and a quarter on a sixteen-foot wide road costs.
But you gotta add your sealing back in there, so that, your seal coat, yeah, you gotta add your crack sealing.
The crack sealing's not in there. I couldn't get, I couldn't get a handle on that, on the cost of that, what they charge for something like that. I don't know, it's probably an hourly rate or something, but you saw the, when they sealed that two forty-five area, Louisville Road area, they had a thousand.
So this is only a couple of years old, is that correct?
What do you mean?
It's only a couple of years old. We just hadn't had a longevity to it.
No, no, it's been around a while. We haven't used it in Kentucky. Why, I don't know, but they have...
Probably cost freezing the dump, forty degrees.
Well, they used, up in Ohio, it's used a lot. Ohio's worse, it's worse weather than we've got, so...
Same mix?
Yeah, all you have, this company comes from Ohio, this brochure is their brochure, and...
It's just a real fancy chipsy, is what it is.
No, it's not wrong. I say it's a fancy chipsy.
This keeps you, this, this sand mix just keeps you up out of the hole.
Kinda gives a little bit of grip to it, to where it's not sleazy and raining and about...
Here's a picture, this is type of machines you gotta have.
That's the...
It's, it's, you know, so there's nobody in Kentucky that has that type of equipment. And that, that's all good out there. I'm not sure we wanna dig anything, but now, the other thing is, it takes an hour or so for it to cure. In other words, you can't put traffic on it for an hour. Not like hot mix, you, you know, when Mago rolls out of hot mix, when they hit twice, they'll put traffic on it, so you've got somebody backed up for what, ten, fifteen, twenty minutes, and they'll get around. This'll have to be an hour, is what I'm reading on it, and I suspicion it's a little longer than that.
And you'd have to lane your traffic off.
Sixteen-foot wide road, you couldn't lane it, a twenty-foot wide road, we could lane it, you know. Two forty-five, they did it, so, you know, that type of thing. I'd be interested in the five-eighths mix and bid, and see what Mago comes up with. It's a little cheaper per linear foot, cause it just lasts a ton inch for it.
So you're...
But it's hot mix, less than an inch type material, you know, it's a special asphalt mix.
What material comes from, Jim, Ohio? They haul it all the way from Ohio?